We were sorry, we could save seven million dollars. And so, and the other thing is, they won't allow any, because in our contract agreement, the contractor has to guarantee everything for three years. Except for these railroads. Nobody can do maintenance on a railroad, but a railway. And we'd like, uh, five million dollars of bridge for ongoing maintenance.
I'm in the process.
It's been a lot of extortion, extortion. And we've got three boats now that I'm a lone boat. I won't vote for it. It's good, son. Look at Richland County. He's giving seventy-five million dollars to drop all the losses. Oh, we didn't know that? Seventy-five million dollars? But they, we do have some, how they can spend it. But they're gonna start building housing projects and all of that type of thing. Seventy-five million. That was a lone boat. John tried to talk me into that boat. Said, I guess.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the West Fargo City Commission meeting for Monday, May sixteenth. At this time, I'd ask you to please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First order of business is to approve the order of the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Jurdevic, seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the order of the agenda as distributed and as it is in front of you th- this evening. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item D is the approval of the minutes of May second, twenty twenty-two. They're on pages three through five, and they have been distributed.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner George, seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of May second, twenty twenty-two as they are distributed. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item E is the building permits. The report has been distributed. It is on pages six through eight in your packet.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurdevic. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the building permits as distributed on pages six through eight in the package. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. The next order of business is a consent agenda. We have items A through J, pages nine through fifty-three. They have been distributed, and they are in your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner George. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the order of the consent agenda, A, items A through J, pages nine through fifty-three. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Moving forward, we are now in the regular agenda. Item number one is a request to revise the truck route ordinance thirteen fifteen dash twenty-two. On pages fifty-four to fifty-six in your packet. This, this item is being brought forth by Mr. John Wilson. Good evening, Mr. Wilson. Would you please state your name for the record and your address?
John Paul Wilson, one four zero five Third Avenue North, Fargo, North Dakota, five eight one oh two.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Uh, basically, I got a ticket about a week ago for being off a truck route. And I drive an LTL truck, and I do P and D. LTL is less than truckload, P and D is pickup and delivery. I'm basically a giant UPS truck. I deliver the stuff to your citizens and your businesses and pick up from the same, and it's generally odd-sized items a lot of the time, and it could even be a full truckload depending on the situation. The problem we run into every day, and this is getting worse and worse with the advent of dot com deliveries from, you know, the internet, is we don't have an easy way to get back and forth between Thirteenth and Main Avenue, being the worst part of that location, between Forty-Fifth all the way out to West Main. And I understand, you know, the purpose of truck routes, don't get me wrong. We don't do stupid things like cross two-ton posted bridges with a twenty-ton truck. I mean, that's just reality. But I'm loaded, you know, according to what I'm seeing here in, in my interpretations, I would have no problem being at the ten thousand per axle weight anytime I'm doing a pickup or delivery at my max capacity. And typically, I'm a mu- a lot lighter than that, just by nature of what we do. And I just think the city needs to really look at this ordinance and figure out a revision for an exception, because you make an exception for your own garbage truck. You make an exception for your city plow, the fire truck, a school bus, the telephone company, XL Energy, their truck is actually heavier in terms of pounds per square foot on the roadway than I am, typically when I'm out doing my deliveries. And what hampers me is, is simple things. What happened here was I picked up at basically the Lowe's over on Thirteenth. I come out of their driveway, and there's no, no truck sign there. There's down at the corner of the intersection on Thirteenth. And I was just gonna skip up to Main up Seventh, because there's a traffic light to get me onto Main safely and pick up at the old Business Essentials building at two oh five East Main. That's what I got, you know, where I, where I got pinched on this. And the irony is, it, your ordinance also specifies deliveries. It says nothing about pickups. Well, theoretically, at that point, your customers, your city businesses mad at me because I refused to go into the alley behind the place, because they said it's posted, no trucks. I said, if I was making a delivery, I'm legal. Between those two points, if I had this in a box to drop off, it depends on which side of that halfway line I, I land on, as to where I can go even. In other words, if I'm a block short going up to Main, I have to turn around and go back to Thirteenth, down to Forty-Fifth, or all the way out to West Main in order to do this. Well, now, when I was up there, once again, I get another pickup back where I started from, at the U-Haul Center. Had to go all the way down to Forty-Fifth, down to Thirteenth, back up, and around. Well, when you're trying to do LTL, just like UPS, I do a lot of pickups and a lot of deliveries. It, it, it's a lot of stuff. When I started this job with the company I'm at now, I maybe had one or two residential deliveries a week. Just Thursday and Friday alone, I had ten in West Fargo that were residential's, where I'm having to go off. So again, I go off the truck route, and because I'm making a delivery, well, then I can still, even though it's posted, no trucks, according to the ordinance, I can go from one to the next if it's closer to go that way versus all the way back out and in and in. There, to me, I, I think it could be a simple fix as far as an exemption for LTL, as far as maybe even designating a, a maximum axle weight that we're allowed to, to do these crossings with.
Sir? Sorry to interrupt. May I ask you a quick question, because is it because you're empty? Is that where you're saying you have to go around, and you're picking up and not delivering? Or are you overweight? What, what is the, what is your? Why can you not go from one direct to the other one, which it says you can do in here?
Because I'm four axles.
Because you're, okay.
Okay, if, if, if you saw my truck, you, you would think automatically, you know, it's like a road semi. You know, one of those with the sleeper cab on it. And it's not. It's a day cab, so it's a single axle tractor and a double axle trailer. It's forty-eight feet with a lift gate. My empty weight is, you know, gonna be probably about twenty-five or twenty-six thousand pounds, I, I would guess.
So your ticket is not for, is for overweight? Is that what I'm?
Correct.
It's not for going from one place to another? You're overweight?
It, no, it's, it's for going from the one place to the other using a, a posted street.
Does that make sense, Commissioner? I, I mean, I'm looking at this.
I'm gonna call on the chief. He, looks like he wants to weigh in on this. Chief Otterness?
Thank you, Commissioner President Dardis and commissioners. Uh, I did, I looked at the citation, uh, visited with Mr. Wilson a little bit before the meeting, and the citation is for driving off of a truck route with, uh, with a vehicle that's by, by current ordinance is prohibited. Whether it's fully loaded or empty, uh, the fact that it's got three or more axles, he's required to, um, like any other delivery or, um, you know, somebody that might be conducting business in the community, if they can make a, they could come off the truck route to make the delivery, but then they have to go back to the truck route, um, to, to exit from the, from the city. So they can't, uh, they can't traverse, you know, all the, the inner streets from in between Forty-Fifth and, and, uh, you know, these, or between Main and, and Thirteenth Avenue to be able to, uh, to try to get to another truck route, so.
But if they're going, chief, from one deliver or pickup to another, then they can do that, correct? It says you can go from, so in other words, if you have a pickup on.
It actually doesn't specify pickups in the ordinance.
Well, pickup or delivery, I don't know that that's a, a big difference, so.
It does, it, and Commissioner, that's a good point. It, it does specify that it, it shall, the ordinance shall not prohibit picking up or delivering. So it does say that in, uh, in paragraph A, one A, that, uh, that the, the ordinance is not intended to prohibit Mr. Wilson or anybody else from, from going and picking something up or delivering it.
So then, what did he get the ticket for, I guess, then?
Driving off of the truck route.
But it, was he going to, uh, a business to pick up or deliver, like, I mean?
I guess I'll have to defer to Mr. I don't know the, I don't know the specifics of the citation.
At, at the U-Haul Center, one U-Box, which is household goods, yeah, twenty-five hundred pound maximum. Typically, they're, they're less than that. And I was, had to go from there. My, my pickup assigned at that point was up there at the Business Essentials building at two oh five East Main. And then again, now I had to go back to the same center, but of course, because I got the ticket, I wasn't gonna shortcut because I'm, you know, like I said, I'm in confusion on this a little bit. You, you would think I would be allowed to use the most, you know, direct and efficient route.
It's, it is, well, and that, that's where I guess the ordinance, it, it is the most direct and efficient route for our truck, for our ordinances, right, for the truck route. So if he goes into a residential area and makes a pickup, he has to then go back out to, to Main Avenue or Thirteenth Avenue and then go to the, to the nearest, uh, he can't go through city streets and avenues to, to then, uh, to then, uh, go to his next pickup or delivery. He has to go back out to the truck route.
So item D, just, just, because I am, just to clarify, it says, item D says, trucks making more than one delivery within the city of West Fargo on any one trip may take the most direct route between one delivery and the next. Doesn't say anything about going back to Main Avenue, or says they could go from one to the other.
I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call on Mr. Shockley.
I'm, I'm having a tough time following the, the facts also, because I, I agree with Commissioner Simmons. That's what the ordinance provides, and so this, to me, this feels like it should be before the municipal judge who can decide whether or not it's a valid citation.
Well, my, my concern, and this is why I'm, I'm here, is I think the ordinance itself needs to be readdressed and clarified, because, you know, you, you do provide specific exemptions, exemptions for specific vehicles. And, you know, like I said, your city truck, your, your city garbage truck, your school bus, your fire truck, your telephone, XL Energy would be exempt under this. But I wouldn't be, according to the letter of the law, and then I'm risking, once again, coming here or municipal court, having to take time off, losing wages, you know, having, maybe having to tell a customer, sorry, I'd like to service you, but I can't. Because, you know, or when they, nowadays in the world of logistics, we watch driver scores as far as my efficiencies. UPS has been doing it for a lot longer than a lot of us. And if it gets to the point where everything in West Fargo is taking two or three times the time it's taking me to accomplish in Fargo or Horace or Moorhead, your customers' rates are gonna go up accordingly.
But, but it seems.
Go ahead.
It seems to me like it actually is saying what you want it to say, because it's, as, as Commissioner.
Well, if, if it does, could you explain why this was written?
I, well, and, and I think, to our attorney's recommendation, that's a question for the judge as to whether that was a correct violation or not.
Right.
But, I mean, it does state right in here, trucks making more than one delivery within the city of West Fargo on any one trip may take the most direct route between one delivery and the next.
Well, and like I said, this is why I'm here is.
Maybe the slight error or pro- problem here is that your next spot wasn't in the city of West Fargo, it, because the U-Haul.
No, it actually was. I, 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 but my, but my previous spot was not in the city of West Fargo. You know, and that, and that's.
Then I would question, I, I would question what's in your hand as well, but I think the ordinance actually isn't saying that you have, if it's between two deliveries in West Fargo, you can take the most direct route.
Well, my, my biggest fear is, is, again, like I expressed to Mayor Dardis on the phone after this, is the fact that with all the dot com traffic that we're gonna see as LTL carriers, that this is, once again, gonna happen to someone else, and it's just gonna become a headache for those of us who have to do our job.
Again, back to Mr. Shockley.
I, I was just gonna say, the reason that the ordinance, a couple things. So our ordinance is very similar to the one in Fargo and Horace. I know the one in Horace is almost identical to this, uh, along with a lot of the other surrounding communities. And, um, everybody's correctly cited this section where if you're going between deliveries, you're fine. Just the intent is that after you're done with your delivery, you return to the truck route, because we have residents who don't want trucks just driving up and down their streets. And so, that's.
Well, and this is where it relates, because like I said, the, 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 the problem I face as an LTL carrier is, just like I said, the other, you know, Lowe's, Business Essential, I gotta go back over to the same place. And I have no cross-street to do it. Now, if I get over to Lowe's and a pickup comes again back out there on East Main Avenue, you go out to West Main on the interstate, or you go all the way to Forty-Fifth. That's not gonna be efficient. That, that in the end is gonna result in higher costs to the customer in the end.
I, I respect that, Mr. Wilson, but, uh, we get plenty of calls whenever there is a semi rumbling down a, a neighborhood street too, that, uh, you know, so there, there, it's.
I don't know. I, I just feel that maybe there's a compromise that could be made somewhere.
Mr. Shockley, did you have another point you'd like to make?
Yeah, the council, or the commission can always change the truck routes, um, by resolution. And the ordinance is intended. Uh, we've done that from time to time. The commission has looked at what's the most efficient way to set up truck routes. You, you can do that by resolution. Not, that's totally up to the commission if you want to.
Unfortunately, I'm sorry, Mayor. Unfortunately, we only have one route, and that would be Ninth Street that we could go through now. There is no other anymore. We've, we've done that over the years, and we've got it.
We've eliminated the other.
We've eliminated, yes.
The north-south routes.
There was only other one.
Intentionally.
Intentionally.
We had a lot of, a lot of, a lot of complaints on Cheyenne Street. We had to, we had to do something there. Okay, uh, any additional questions? Chief, excuse me.
Yeah, just one other point, uh, you know, and I certainly, uh, um, I understand the, the predicament that Mr. Wilson's in, and and, uh, just, you know, by way of ordinance and clarification, I think what, what he was saying earlier, at least the conversation that I had with him is, he was going from one pickup to another pickup. It wasn't specific to deliveries, which is what is exempted under the ordinance. So it was a pickup to a pickup, and on a pickup, you have to go back to the truck route.
That's what you're saying.
And so, the other issue with this is if we go with a axle-by-axle weight limit, you have to understand, and I explained my situation to him as well, we have one officer that's in charge of taking care of truck regulatory things in this city. And we don't wanna get in the business of stopping every truck that's in a residential area and weighing every, that, that takes, if you talk about inefficiencies, it's gonna take a half hour to an hour to weigh these trucks to see if they're in, in violation of our ordinance, if we, if we put a, a weight restriction per axle. So I don't know what the, it certainly is, uh, like city attorney said, it's certainly up to the commission, but from an enforcement standpoint, it's really hard to tell on a, on a truck similar to his, what that, what that weight is without actually putting a scale underneath the axle.
And, and I think really, you know, even if you were to make a change to, to allow a three or, or a four axle at ten thousand per axle, it would be pretty easy for an average officer to be able to guess about where I'm at weight-wise, just based off of my typical manifest. You know, in other words, I have all my documentation for what's in my truck. That's, you know, federal law. I can't just drive around with stuff in the box that's unaccounted for.
I, I, please, thank you. I, I honestly don't know that, obviously, it, it, it contributes to the weight, but I think the, when we did this, the theory was is, you know, honest to, we just don't want your trucks driving through all the neighborhoods all the, you know, that was kind of, we got a lot of complaints. So it's more that than I think it is, uh, than the weight problem is, but I, I do understand what the chief is saying now as far as kinda makes more sense. It's a, it's a delivery or a pickup, and so in the ordinance, you're right, you, you probably have to go back to Main Avenue and then go around. I mean, otherwise, I think if we, if we would allow something like this, we would have all the vehicles going. This, I mean, it would just become a, a huge, huge problem.
Like I said, to me, there, there, there has to be, there has to be a solution to it, because it's not gonna get any better over time. You know, it's like I was telling the chief, I went from one or two deliveries a week seven or eight years ago, and, and it was absolutely intense, you know, during the COVID shutdowns. But it's not even, it's not even really backed off since then. I mean, on, you know, Thursday, Friday alone, I had ten in West Fargo. There were residential's. It's only gonna grow. And I know I'm not the only carrier doing it.
Commissioner Jurdevic.
Uh, John, just one quick question. Do we, do we treat deliveries and pickups as the same fundamental thing throughout? Because I, I mean, if, if we don't, I do see the suggestion that we should treat those as the, the same fundamental thing. If a business or person needs something picked up, we should treat that just like a delivery.
Um, well, the, the ordinance provides an exception for vehicles delivering or picking up materials, and so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I thought I heard conflicting.
Yeah, I, I think it has more to do with the route that the truck was taking than anything, and the location of the truck routes.
Well, my understanding from talking to Lieutenant Dura is, is well on this, that according to your DOT officer, I was in the wrong. So, like I said, to me, there's, it, it, there just seems to be too many things that are conflicting themselves, and to me, it's just gonna lead to another one of these.
Commissioner Olson.
I just wanna make sure I, I understand you are at Lowe's, and, and you picked up something. How did you get to Lowe's?
Thirteenth Avenue.
And then you, your next, you were gonna go north up to Main Avenue.
Yep, because my next one was.
At Lowe's, you were only a block away from Thirteenth.
Right.
You could've went south one block and then got on the truck route and then got around, right?
Right.
Rather than driving through a residential area.
Right, but again, I'm, I was assuming that I would have the same exemption as a delivery. You know, because again, this is, this is where everybody's a little confused, pickup versus delivery. Well, you know, in my world, they're one and the same.
And at Lowe's, you weren't on a truck route. You left a truck route to get to Lowe's, and then you left West Fargo, or you left Fargo to get to a residential street in Fargo, West Fargo. I'm getting too many Fargos mixed up here. And you could've went back to Thirteenth Avenue South.
Right.
Traversed either east or west to get on another truck route to get up to Main Avenue.
But now, for example, take Seventh Avenue to the north of there, part of that is Fargo. As far as, as far as the street, there's no truck restriction coming in there. Now, if I were to do the same thing, say I were to pick up at a house there on Seventh, technically, Thirteenth is closer, but, because it's six blocks versus Main, which is seven blocks. So now, again, I'd have to go all the way down to Thirteenth, back to Forty-Fifth, up, and around. Keep track of that in my world.
Commissioner Simmons.
At, at three or four o'clock in the afternoon when I've got ten pickups.
So I'll make two comments. First of all, number one is we make the concrete trucks do this all the time right now, and that was a big issue a few years back. It's gonna be hard to change it. But the second one I'm making, the most important, is I think that we just move this on and let the judge determine where we're at with this, and that'll give us some guidance as far as how, uh, he or she goes with this too.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Chief Otterness.
Uh, Commissioner President Dardis and, uh, other commissioners, I just, uh, just for clarification, um, and maybe Commissioner Jurdevic, this is where there's some confusion. If you look under, uh, sub one under that ordinance, it says that you can do pickup or delivery. But when you move down to sub D, it says that trucks making more than one delivery within the city of West Fargo, it's, you can't, it, you know, I, I get we're probably splitting hairs here, but, but the way the ordinance is written, if the, if, if he's not making, um, you know, deliveries, but he's making pickups, officers are writing the citation as the, as the ordinance is written. So I, I, and I understand your point. I just wanted to clarify that under sub D, it says that's only for, uh, deliveries and not pickups, so.
Because if I see one area where, where an improvement can be made is to treat pickups and deliveries.
I agree.
Well, and like I said, the other thing is too, technically, you know, the U-Haul Center is a Fargo business, so it's not like I'm exactly going between two West Fargo businesses or two West Fargo residences. But, you know, like I said, this is where I just feel that there's, you know, some of this just needs to be revised at some point, looked at. Because it's, it's not gonna go away in our world, you know, as far as the deliveries and pickups we're gonna have to make.
I mean, could it be something as simple as just changing that, uh, sub D to making more than one to pickup or delivery? I mean, could it be that simple of a change?
But I'm still limited to two axles under the ordinance as well.
Keep in mind, the changes that we make, though, is gonna add more vehicles to those neighborhoods. That's the problem. That's, it's, it's not just a matter of changing a simple ordinance.
Well, and I don't know, you know, frankly, I think you could even subwrite into the ordinance, once again, an axle weight limit, so you don't have the, the, the problem of the concrete trucks, you know, coming fully loaded back onto these streets again, saying, oh, we're gonna use the shortcut, because they wouldn't be able to when they're loaded. And empty, they might even be pretty close empty, because they're, they're heavy in comparison to me, you know, and the other LTL trucks.
And I'm not just picking on concrete trucks. I mean, I'm, I'm just saying the neighborhood.
No, and I understand, you know, because you don't want the fuel trucks going from the, you know, the terminal down past the high school. That's part of the reason, you know, for the no hazmat as well as the no truck. You know, I, I, I understand where, you know, some of this dynamic is, you know, in relation to common sense, but you also have to give some common sense at the other end of the spectrum, because otherwise, we're all gonna be getting pinched by this. It's just gonna be a, a constant nightmare at some point for us. I don't know. I, I don't, I don't think there's a simple answer. I think it needs to be looked at and, and, and just addressed and see if we can come up with something that, that helps your citizens and your businesses as well as helps us, especially at five fifty-five a gallon for diesel right now. That's a, it's a lot of extra mileage some days for some of us.
I thought ultimately, right at the beginning, he made a good point. This is gonna be way beyond tonight, but with the truck routes and between Main and Thirteenth Avenue, there is issues with having good routes or good roads. I think with public works, the city in general, we need to do something with that, because that whole end of town, we know that's gonna grow, and that needs, we need a solution there. But I know that's in the future, but that was a valid point.
So I guess unless anybody has any other questions, I'll, I'll, I'll just say thanks for your time, and let's hope maybe you guys can come up with an answer on it.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. We appreciate you, uh, calling it to our attention. We, uh, we will, uh, we will address this internally as to what the recommendations of both, uh,
And who's Emily?
I'm sorry?
I'd like to thank Emily for making this happen on short notice. So, all right, have a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That being said, chief, uh, and Mr. Shockley, any advice that you can give to the commission, we'd be appreciative.
And, uh, probably loop in our assistant city minister too at the engineering department to know what the impact of these dark roadways is.
Excellent, yeah. That's one of the questions I was gonna ask, is when he's talking about all these different weights. I was gonna call on Dustin, but, uh, we'll, uh, we'll wait to see what, uh, the combined resources that we have within the city and make a recommendation. I was going to call on Dustin, but we'll, we'll wait to see what the combined resources that we have within the city and make a recommendation. Item number two on the regular agenda is body worn camera program. Chief Otterness, chief of police city of West Fargo, pages 57 through 62.
Thank you, Commission President Dartis and members of the commission. I'll keep this relatively brief tonight. I sent some additional information in regards to a quote that we received from one of our potential body cam vendors. And then I'll stand for questions that you have. So just by way of background, when I took over as a police chief a little over a year and a half ago, I sat down with every member of the department. And one of the questions I asked, because it's a trend nationwide, is, is how our police officers felt about body worn cameras. And I can tell you that an overwhelming majority of the officers or sworn staff in the department support implementing a body worn camera program. The job has obviously become increasingly violent. As of April 1st, I threw some statistics in there that were just published by the Fraternal Order of Police. 101 police officers as of April 1 of this year have been shot in the United States. 17 of those being fatal, which is a 43% increase from last year and a 63% increase from the year before that. In addition to that, most of the, well, all the other metro departments in our region, Cass County, Clay County, Moorhead Police in Fargo, most recently have all gone, gone to a body worn camera program. There was an interesting article recently in the Fargo Forum about the successes that the Fargo Police Department has had with their body worn cam program. I don't know if you've seen that or not, but I believe it was maybe last weekend that, that article was in the, in the paper. And looking at this program in addition to assist us with maintaining our accountability with our citizens and our people in our community and also as a, as a really positive training tool. In addition to that, during individual meetings I've had with, with each of you since I started, I'd indicated a desire to wait on some federal funding to become available before we started to look into a body worn camera program. And that grant funding is available right now. And so we are working diligently. Lieutenant Belkey is working on a federal grant opportunity right now. It's a matching grant, so it's a 50% matching grant with the federal government. So whether we will be successful or not with that, it's hard to say. I'm, I'm sure there will be a number of agencies throughout the country that we'll be competing with for, for those grant dollars. So we'll have to kind of wait and see what happens with that. It's due on May 25th. So we've got just about a week left to prepare everything and, and we won't hear anything until fall, whether we're selected for that grant or not. So in addition to the training tool and, and holding our folks accountable, I see it as a big piece of our problem solving and community engagement strategy. It obviously will help to increase trust, transparency and communication between the police department and the community. It's highly effective in providing an objective audio and visual record of interactions that can capture evidence in the event of a crime, a police citizen interaction or use of force incident. And sharing of digital evidence from our body worn cameras between law enforcement agencies and not only the state's attorney's office, but our city prosecutor, defense attorneys and the judiciary. Talked a little bit about the grant. It's funded through the Bureau of Justice Assistance. Again, the deadline is coming up quickly on the 25th. Applications for funding law enforcement agencies seeking to purchase, not only purchase body worn cameras, but to establish and expand comprehensive body worn camera programs with specific and demonstrated plans to implement. So we'll be up against departments throughout the country for this limited amount of federal dollars that are trying to expand their programs as well. So it's not just agencies like ours that are looking to implement initial, but it'll be other agencies that are looking to expand as well. The eligibility is restricted to agencies that are publicly funded, a maximum of 40 awards. And the, this current funding model caps each body worn camera at $2,000 per unit. But that also includes funding for related equipment. And I'll talk to you a little bit more about that as the presentation goes on. Digital data storage and management, which we've been working with our IT folks on. James Anderson, our IT director's been involved in this. Some officer training, people that are going to have to maintain and manage and run this program and administrative personnel. So the statistics that you've got in front of you here come from the WatchGuard proposal that, that I forwarded. And the reason we've only looked at one vendor right now, just so you're aware, is because we have invested heavily in WatchGuard's technology already. Our entire fleet of patrol cars is outfitted with WatchGuard technology. All of our in-car cameras. You recently approved a $60,000 expenditure within the police department to rewire all of our interview rooms because the technology that we had put in there when the building was built, the police department was constructed, has failed. And so, or isn't, is, it is failing and it's not supported anymore. And so we are implementing WatchGuard audio, video in our interview rooms as well. So I think we're, if we're not at the point, we're very near the point where we are kind of locked into WatchGuard. Otherwise, the costs on this program, you can imagine for a fleet of 20 mark patrol cars is probably going to be double or more to swap, to swap out all of our in-car cameras and go with a new body worn camera vendor because we have to be on a compatible system. We don't want to run one in-car camera and a different body worn camera. We want those to be integrated. Technology needs to be integrated with that. So, so that's why you've got the one proposal before you tonight from WatchGuard. Some of the things that I was able to work with our finance director, Jim Larson, on is that getting you actual, what we believe are, are the closest numbers to the actual cost of this program moving forward over the next five years. The proposal from WatchGuard only included basically the equipment, the initial purchase of the equipment, some other equipment issues that I'll talk to you about at the end and the storage, the transfer of some of our current digital evidence that we have on a server in-house, transferring that to the cloud. And I'll talk to you a little bit more about the benefits of being able to, to store all of our secure data in the cloud versus having it stored internally on a server. But anyway, we'll run through these costs real quick. Again, Jim Larson was able to plug in. I've, I've requested as part of our 2023 budget, an admin person to manage basically all of the body worn camera program. And so that will be somebody that will have to take all of the video. You can imagine the thousands and thousands of hours that we'll have on body worn camera video and redact the things that need to be redacted by law. Juvenile's information, faces, people potentially in compromising positions, medical type things that would be excluded under some of our open records laws and things like that. So that's the, that's the reason for the request for one additional full-time employee to manage, basically manage the entire program and, and make that video that's going to be needed for prosecution available to whether it's a state's attorney or our city attorney through that whole redaction process. So that's what line one is under staffing with the, the anticipated compensation plus benefits. The educational piece that's underneath there is an anticipated cost. We don't know whether that's going to be just a year one cost or whether that will stretch out over the, you know, over the five-year course. It probably depends largely on internally in the police department, where our division commanders, our lieutenants are lined up. There may be some training costs associated with, you know, moving personnel around and into different positions. But that's just kind of a placeholder as a possibility, but pretty low in terms of total amount. So the equipment and installation takes into account the first year costs of all of the body worn cameras and some other additional pieces of equipment. There's some retrofitting that has to happen with our squad cars, with our in-car system to make it integrated with our body worn cameras. So, and that'll get done, that came on a separate bid from Code Four, who does all the installations on all of our, our squad cars, our fleet right now. And so that, that's contained in a separate bid, but those costs are, are included in here. Mr. Larson threw those in as well. And then the annual subscription cost is basically the storage, the unlimited storage that will take place inside our squad car and the cloud storage. So when that, when that, when that either dash cam video or body worn camera video uploads here at the police department magically, I can't explain how that happens, but somebody from the IT department could. That's, those are all those basically subscription costs. And so you see year one, there's a much larger layout of capital at 221,000 roughly because of the equipment and installation costs. Year two through five goes up just marginally because of some inflation figures that Mr. Larson had factored in there. I guess average inflation numbers, which used to be 3%. So bringing the total cost of the program, as you can see, up to about $735,700. So any questions so far before I continue?
Commissioner Olson.
Yes, I've got one question. So the grant that you're going to apply for, what, what does that cover? Just the cost for the equipment and installation or anything else?
So it will, it will cover equipment and then some, some pieces of equipment that I'll talk to you about here shortly. But our, our storage costs are included in there, some training is included in there. So I think, you know, we're going to write for as much as we can to have that 50% match on. But I think everything that we've talked about here so far would be covered under that grant.
What's the net difference, chief? You said that, that you could only, 40 would be the maximum that would be awarded?
That's 40, yeah. It, under the, under the grant on the application page, it says there's going to be a maximum of 40 awards granted under this. So, but I don't know the, the total dollar amount. I think they capped it at $2 million per agency.
So when you say the cap is 40, it isn't 40 cameras or the equipment of what? It's, it's 40 total grants across America?
That's correct. My, my understanding of that is there will be 40 awards given out. Yep.
Additional questions at this time?
Please feel free to add in too if I'm missing anything.
This grant is about 160,000. This is 2,000 per camera, 80 cameras.
Yep.
So would you have an offset of 160?
For the, yes, for the, just for the equipment alone. So.
It's about a 50% grant then is what we're saying?
Yes.
For the equipment?
It's a 50% matching, that's correct.
So with this then, are we, is this a mill increase basically that we're going to see again at budget cycle? Is that how this works? I mean, because this is basically, I mean, this is less than one mill essentially, year two, three, four, whatever. So is that like a mill increase on your budget that you're looking for? Like, how does that work budget, like, do you know what I'm saying?
I do.
Okay.
And I guess, you know, that, I, I guess I don't know whether that's, that's my place to say how this gets funded or not. Certainly we've talked about the potential for some of the capital outlays. That is one of the reasons why, you know, we've, we've asked for the, for the public support on, on a half cent public safety sales tax increase. And this is one of those programs. And I think, as I recall, it's been a while, but during some initial conversations that I had with, with you as commissioners, I'd indicated that I'd, you know, because of my past experience with federal grants like this, when I left the city of Bloomington, implementing a body worn camera program like this, I was really hopeful that, that there would be some federal funding opportunities. And, and there are this year rather than burying all that expense. But I guess my request is going to be based on, on my belief that there is a need to implement this program like this, that regardless of whether we're successful in obtaining a 50% match, that we would move forward with a body worn camera program. So I guess that, that would be, and then how we determine the best way to, to fund this from year one, you know, through year five and moving forward is another question.
So obviously the best thing would be for the half cent or half, yeah, half percent increase on the sales tax. That would be the best, but that's not guaranteed.
Correct.
So then you're suggesting this could come out of the police budget, but this could come out of capital improvement or this could, I mean, so you're saying you're not, it's not guaranteed to come out of police funds from your point of view? That, so let's just say, yes, it's coming out of police funds. That's all, so half mill, three quarter mill, whatever increase. Are you looking for additional mill increases or is this like, this is the big one I want to have approved, like no matter what type of situation or?
Well, currently there's, within my, within my budget, we've asked for two new full-time civilians within the police department. Then additional sworn staff as well, three additional sworn staff. But again, we're, you know, very early on in the, in the budget, you know, I guess data collecting stages of the budget. And, you know, I, you know, I haven't, we haven't even sat down to have conversations with, with the police commissioner or anybody yet about, about all those things moving forward. But those are the things that, this is the big capital expenditure outside of additional personnel.
Okay, I'm just trying to get an idea in my head of, I, I, I agree with you. I think these are super great, great thing to have and I think they should be, you know, we should do it. I'm just trying to figure out what, how much of an increase we're looking at is what the reality is.
I understand.
Commissioner Simmons, then Commissioner Jervin.
Thank you. Chief, first, first off, I, I'm, this isn't really even part of the budget. This is above and beyond the budget. This is what you want now, not at budget time. Because you have to have this in by the 25th of May, right?
Well, our proposal, Commissioner Simmons, has to be in to the federal government by the 25th of May. But we don't have to, we don't have to make a decision. I didn't plan on, on doing anything. We won't know if we're, if we're a recipient of this grant until sometime into the, probably into the fourth quarter of the year. So this isn't something I'm asking for now.
Okay, so then we can budget it then into the budget if we have.
That's right. It would be something in '23.
Then the next question, I'm just, just a little confused, I always am. But you have the total program cost of 221,000, but you keep mentioning other themes that you're going to talk about. So it's, it's more than, obviously it's more than that.
Those are, those are the, those are the final numbers. But I just want to give you some, some explanation further down here on, on the, on this proposal from WatchGuard as to what some of those additional costs are on top of the, the, what?
So it will be more than the body worn cameras?
It will be more than the 221,000.
No.
No, that's the total.
That is, that is the total number. There's just additional explanation for you as to where that number came from.
I just want to know the total.
Yep.
So that was it, okay.
No, that, those are the, those are the, those are the best numbers that we could come up with. Everything in, all of the different proposals, the, the equipment, the storage, the retrofit of the squad cars. And then at the end of this, I wanted just to show you some other things that I think are really important pieces of this program as we move forward. So this, just go through this real, real, real quick. This is where we came up with, with those numbers. So 80 body worn cameras at, at $2,940 apiece comes to $235,200. And that's spread out over a five-year term, those costs.
Commissioner Jervin.
So going back to the costs and kind of setting aside the other budget things that are coming, of course. But, you know, when we look at the police budget for this year, what, $9 million?
Yeah, around nine and a half million. Correct.
The average, you know, property tax increase or property valuation, excuse me, not tax increase, but property valuation increase is probably close to 10%. I mean, there were 7,000 property owners that got notification of that. So I think that's a fair estimate. That means that, you know, the value of a mill is going up by effectively that same amount. So it's not really a mill increase. I mean, if we look at it at, as equal mills, you know, the police budget has, you know, close to a million dollars of increase there. Now hopefully, we can actually decrease mills. Now, that's an optimistic perspective. But I'm just saying, the, the property, you know, the value of the mill increasing by far covers this. It's not really going to, this would not equate in and of itself to a mill increase.
I see what you're saying. That's a valid point.
So the additions on, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Mrs. Fiss was going to.
Thank you very much, Commission President and Commissioners. I want to, I, I just want to be very careful. Commissioner Jervin is correct. The value of a mill will go up, but without having the, the department budgets, I haven't seen any of the department budgets other than my own. You need to take a good, strong evaluation of that and then meet with each of you and then meet as a group to get your priorities that you want us to, want us to accomplish for the coming year. and then meet as a group to get your priorities that you want us to, want us to accomplish for the coming year and then base that funding there. But also bear in mind, we're, we still are a million dollars back. We had to take money out of our reserves to cover the shortfall in mills. So we were able to come up with revenues for twenty twenty-one that helped offset part of that. But now in twenty twenty-two, there's no guarantee we're going to be able to do that. But we're working really hard at it.
Thank you. Commissioner Simmons.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Jervick warned us of that last year. But I do feel we need these body cameras without a question. I think our citizens will want these body cameras as well as our officers. So I think it's just a matter of how we can afford to, you know, to budget it. But I don't think there's any question that we should do it. It's just a matter of, we need to figure out a way, Jim and Tina, how to, how to pay for it. That'd be my, that's a motion, by the way, if you need one.
If, if I may, Commissioner Simmons and Commissioners, I just wanted to point out at the end of this in line nineteen, twenty and twenty-one of the communication I sent you earlier today, you're going to see a couple of things in there and I just want to be able to explain what, there's about sixty-seven thousand dollars worth of costs that are add-ons in this program. And I could tell you, having watched body worn cameras come from, you know, I guess, make the transition from kind of a nice to have in your community to a need to have in your community from a transparency perspective, I could tell you story upon story about different jurisdictions, some that I used to work for, that, that, that cut holster triggers and taser triggers out of the budgets and then wished they hadn't done that. And I, I can tell you that what these, what these are is basically when an officer is out on, on a detail, if they don't have their body worn camera on and they end up in a situation where they've got to draw their firearm, the last thing I want my police officer worrying about is whether he should turn his body worn camera on first or draw his firearm first. But I think he should, or she should do both. And so there's triggers, there's, there's Bluetooth technology that's been available for years now that when a police officer draws their weapon, their firearm, their sidearm, it'll automatically turn the body worn camera on. I think that's technology that's out there. It's really important, I think, in terms of transparency in our community. And they have the same technology, that's line nineteen, they have the same technology under line twenty-one for a taser and it's a taser trigger. So we don't have cameras mounted on, on our tasers. And so they have the same technology that's available if an officer were to pull a taser, it automatically turns a body worn camera on. So in, inside the squad cars now with, with the integration between our, our in-car cameras and our body worn cameras, if you turn your lights on on your patrol car with the siren and run emergent, it automatically turns your dash camera on and it will automatically turn your body worn camera on. And so we want to make sure that if we have people out working special details at the lights or a lot of the different community functions that we're out working in every day, that the officer is not having to make a decision between what may be a life and death situation and thinking about turning a body worn camera on if they don't have, if they're not out in a police car with lights, lights going or a siren going, something similar to that. So I just wanted to be able to explain that to you, that, that piece in the budget. And then line twenty is just for spare batteries in case one of our batteries goes down. So I'm open to any other questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Chief. With regard to the comments by Commissioner Jervick and Commissioner George with regard to the valuations of the mill, there's been a preliminary numbers run on that and that's about three point two to three point five million, is that correct? You know, Jim?
Thank you, Commission President Dardis. I can't confirm that just through here, but I can tell you that the value of a mill rose from a hundred and ninety-eight thousand to two hundred and thirty per mill.
Correct.
So whatever that would equate it to, I don't want to say that it's one thing and it's not.
Somebody did the calculation for me. So, you know, to Commissioner Jervick's point about the overall cost of this program, you know, there's additional funds that may be available to apply here. So with that said, this is pretty much just an informational portion at this time. I look forward to you reporting back that you get your federal grant and this makes it a lot easier for us. So, thank you, Chief.
Very hopeful, thank you, appreciate it, Commissioners.
He doesn't need a motion okaying this in order to get the grant?
They're already in the process of writing it, so it's a little late to be asking the permission to some.
Well, we.
Other, would you like a motion?
Probably they'll need it.
That's, that's a great point. We probably should have a, a motion and approval from the commission at least to even submit the grant. We haven't done any of that yet, but just to move forward with the funding.
Because if we get it, it's kind of committing us, so I feel like.
So moved, yep. I made a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay.
We have a motion by Commissioner Simmons and a second by Commissioner Jervick to authorize the submission of the federal grant for body worn camera program. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Chief. Item number three, clerk of court relocation, Mr. Larson.
Thank you, President Dardis and Commissioners. Let's see if I can move to that agenda item here pretty quick. So this is an agenda, agenda item that has been before you in the past a couple of times. And there's been, we've needed clarification of additional information. And so tonight, I hope we have the adequate information to complete the, the request and, and take action. So at this point, I'm going to just show you, up here is the diagram. It shows two office spaces. This is actually, if you were to flip it ninety degrees counterclockwise, it'd show how it would fit over in the West Fargo room. The purpose of the request is, is to relocate the clerk of court office, which right now sits about in the middle of City Hall. By relocating, and it's going to do a number of things. First, it'll vacate an area that would be taken over by the planning and building inspections. And based on space needs, it's been determined that they could definitely use that space very efficiently from where they are today. The other part is security. By relocating the clerk of court to the front, right now, we have to have people still, general public still move in to the center part of the City Hall. If we're able to relocate, that is the only department left that has unintended access into City Hall. We'd be able to actually close the double doors in the middle and stop that access right over here instead of bringing them all the way in for continued security within the City Hall as a whole. The other part is, is that it would bring the activity of clerk of court. Right here, it's, most of it happens right here in the chambers. So this converts as it was this afternoon into a court. This originally wasn't designed for a court, but we're making it work. It doesn't work really efficiently and we have some security issues within the courtroom itself or the commission chambers. Right now, the judge is required to bring, come in and out with everything through the middle of all those attending. And sometimes there, there are security issues for that. And I know the police department has made comment on that for the security of the judge and other staff here. Part of the project would actually put a door, about where those thermostats are into the, that would go over into the West Fargo room. If this design was accepted, we would actually put the office on the north end of the West Fargo room and the south end would become a smaller conference room. We understand this is a great loss to the city because we do not have a lot of large conference rooms. This means we'd have to either be reusing this space or the training area, which already has a lot of scheduling to it, but we would have to add to that. That's just part of the, the situation of, of a city hall in a city that's growing. We also do have, we do show a kind of, you can see by this design how it's going to lay out in there. That's the wall that you see kind of on the upper left-hand corner. That's a, that's not a permanent wall, that's a temporary wall. It's an office system piece with a sliding pocket door to allow you to move, go from that space over to the space here. And then that would allow the judge and other staff to enter into the courtroom without walking through the center of all the, of those that are attending court that day. Sometimes the courtroom does fill up and it's quite full. And we do feel for the safety of our judge and other staff on that. I'm going to just go back to the costs. Unfortunately, the costs do continue to grow, but it seems like that's the norm in everything today. There, that would help a little. We did go out and solicit for three bids on the, on the furniture and we are showing you two and you're going to find that they're very comparable. They're within less than a thousand dollars between the two. One of them is for the system that we use throughout a good part of the city and the other, or the City Hall. And the other is a vendor that we have not used in the past. So we would have a little bit of dissimilar equipment. The cost of the equipment for the wall and the, the door is approximately twenty-three, twenty-four thousand. We did have a third, but that one was already at thirty thousand and that was out, without, that was without pricing the, the center wall. So tonight, our request is to have the commission consider allowing us to move forward with this project. It's about fifty-one thousand total. And we are, we are proposing that that would come from the contingency funds that are already budgeted for the city this year. Questions, please?
A quick question. Okay, I think I was maybe confused before. So the, the door would go from the office right there? And, okay, because originally I had it in my head it was coming from here, no, because that's outside over there.
That goes to exterior, so you can see by the window. So this is the door?
You kind of had me initially when I thought they were coming up here. But if they're going in back there, they still have to walk by people. I mean, is it such a huge difference to walk in over there versus over there? Or they could just walk across the back? No, I, I get what you're saying, but I don't know if that's enough. I don't know, that doesn't sell me. This would sell me, that doesn't sell me. I guess that's where I'm at.
Well, we would prefer to have the door where that small panel is, but there is, there's too much utility or infrastructure for us to go right there and that would, because then we could part, you know, partition it off a little bit.
So I get it that you're limited, but I don't know, it's not that much of a difference. It's just my thoughts.
Mrs. Fisk.
Commission President Dardis and Commissioners, to address what Commissioner George was speaking about, right now, currently, the judge has to come in and there's people in the hallway and there'll be people sitting in here, so they've got to walk through all the people and walk up here and all the way around to find a spot to go sit down. That creates a lot of issues, that creates a lot of unsafe, where this, they would be in that area. They put their robe on, come through the door and then come up here. We had originally thought of putting a wall up from the door all the way up to here, but it just isn't feasible to block that off. But it's far safer than walking through the crowd of people and then up this aisle and all the way around to sit down at the dais in front. That's the best that we could hope for. And the security of staff right now, clerk of court staff during court, go sit in the utility building area and try and collect there. But then there's also people wandering down the hall because they're confused. We've got people coming out of finance, planning, building inspection, coming out of the far end of the building and there's just people there. So we're trying to address as many concerns as we can with the sad part of losing that room.
I do.
Additional questions?
Right here.
Right here.
Thank you. First of all, Jim, we are giving up a huge asset with that conference room. We use that, I'll bet you, every day for meetings and it's the only big one, like you mentioned, we got. As far as the judge, I'm sorry, but I'm just now buying it. I mean, that door is, I get the hallway part, but that door is right there. So whether she comes in, it takes the left, it comes up the hall, it comes up the middle, to me, that's no different. If need be for that, giving up that room is huge. You know, why can't she come through this door then? I get she's got to go around or whatever, but if she's coming to work or whatever. I just don't want to see us give up that conference room. That's, I mean, we use that all the time. And then to pay money to remodel something that, I realize we're going to have it for a few more years until we can build a new or whatever we're going to do with the facility, but it just seems like a waste of money to me.
Any questions from Mr. Larson? Any additional questions?
I have.
Commissioner Olson.
So you've got two bids listed here, one's for fifty thousand, four thirteen, and one's for fifty thousand, fifty-eight. Which one, if it, we were to authorize, which one would you, are you going to go with?
I would recommend that we go with the fifty thousand, four thirteen, fifteen. And again, some of these numbers aren't firm because we can't get contractors to even, I think those are high estimates, but we can't even get them, they won't even write a firm bid for us. We've tried five, six different contractors. I would go with that one only because it's using the Christiansen system, which is similar to systems we've used without the City Hall.
Mrs. Fisk.
There was something I was going to talk about at the end of the meeting, but it Dustin just, Dustin just reminded me that this is going to have an effect on a lot of other parts. If we, with the clerk of court's office potentially going in there, it opens up that space where the clerk of court's office sits now. And the next thing I was going to tell you is that we need to expand for more staff. We don't have enough room, we need to expand. The old commission chambers, put windows in it because right now we have staff sitting in a dark room that has no humidity control. It's, it's, it's just not a favorable thing. Also, we need to open that wall up so that the staff of building inspections and planning are behind protected glass when people come up to see them. And by opening that up, it will allow us to have sixty? Can go from seven till, to twelve positions that we'd be able to fit in there. And so if, it's, we understand as staff, we're racking our brains, we're using every closet we can. We have two more storage rooms that we're going to have to convert here into, into, into spaces for cubicles because we just don't have the room. And that doesn't even touch the PD, but this is not ideal. I don't like the idea of losing this room, but I like the idea of protecting our staff. And it just seems like the only option left, as unfortunate as that is.
So now you're talking, how much are we talking, how much money are we talking over there to do that?
We don't even have estimates on that. We have, I mean, we have a wild idea of what it might cost, but we don't have anything put together to even bring forward to you.
So where's the study that, that we're doing? Is that done completely yet?
Not, not completely, we're waiting for the reports to come back.
So we don't have it yet, right?
No, we do not.
Okay, so then, again, I kind of go back to, I think we, I think we should hold off till we see that study and see what, you know, maybe it's, I'm thinking, quite honestly, I've been long enough to know what you just mentioned with the heating and the duct system. I'm, I would, I'm thinking pretty certainly that study's going to say it's not feasible to continue putting money into this building. And so if, why would we want to put anything in right at this point? I realize the safety, we can work on that. I think we've got, you know, the chief could take care of that part. But I, I just think we should see that whole study before we put any more money into this facility.
Well, I mean, that brings up a question, just, it wasn't that many months ago, we voted to approve.
The study.
Well, no, we voted to approve spending money on improving the heating and air conditioning in that space, did we not?
Thank you, Commissioner Jervick. What was approved was to put in a, a control unit. I can't describe it very well. It was the most inexpensive option.
It was the middle option. There were three options, we went with the middle option.
But we started with that one and then we were going to get, you wanted more than one coat. So then we were going to go and see if they could give us better pricing. So we haven't done the middle of the road one yet. We have to bring that back to you. Again, we were waiting to, this study to tell us, is this HVAC system even worth putting another dime into? Because I don't know. So we did not spend the full amount on the middle one. We, in fact, I don't even know that you, you discussed it, but I don't know if you approved spending that money. But regardless, I can look back, but we, we did the first part. They didn't have the, they didn't have the parts anyway for the middle one. But they did have a regulator, I think it was called? Isn't that what it was? A regulator to try and regulate temperatures in some of our spaces because it's so chopped up that the heating and cooling system can't handle it. So that's the only thing we've been able to do so far.
Commissioner.
So what do you, what are you looking, you're looking for approval, obviously.
We are requesting approval, yes, to move forward with this. It's, it's just when we take a look at the gain of the space in the other parts of the City Hall, added security, the security for the judge and with, without minimizing the loss of the conference room. We understand that's pretty significant.
I mean, I'll say that we are years away from any other potential. I mean, I'll say that we are years away from any other potential solution that has, that's barely being talked about at best-case scenario, and so we need to make this space work for us. So, as much as I agree this is expensive, and I hate losing that conference room, I would make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion and a second to approve, uh, the clerk of court relocation as presented by Mr. Larson for a total sum of fifty thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and fifteen cents. Is there any further discussion?
Just to clarify, that's not a firm number yet.
Correct, yes, that you, there are some time and material bids on putting the door in and the like, not to exceed at this point in time, that's a fair thing. We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
No.
We have a three to two in favor, uh, uh, of the, of the motion. Motion passes. Item number four, project financing for improvement district number thirty oh three. Mr. Larson, Finance Director, page sixty-nine in our packets.
President Dardis, Commissioners, thank you. Well, here we're finally coming with some little different news. This is actually a reduction of costs from what we had estimated, uh, thanks to the work of staff, engineers, and, and a lot of people involved with this project. This project, and now we have final costs collected, and we are about six hundred and seventy-six thousand under the original estimate, so that's a real positive, and, uh, really pleased with that. With the change in the, the overall cost, it also changes the how we, the funding. We'd like to bring a recommendation that changes from the original request to how we would fund this. We'd like to use one point eight three four million of capital sales tax, revenue bond of seven hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-six thousand, five sixty-two on the sewer revenue bond, one point five million of economic development sales tax, two point three seven seven million has come in from the DOT, that's been received funds, and then we'd like to use a full two point five million of the prairie dog funds. Uh, the prairie dog funds, we have received that full amount, uh, there was originally one million set aside towards this project. So, the request of staff tonight is to have commission consider, um, resetting the source of funding for this project based on final numbers of the project.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Jim, remind me again what district three thousand and three is, remind me.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, a great clarification, that's the Cheyenne Road Diet, so that's the improvements. I believe it's from Seventh Avenue to Main, uh, that were completed primarily last year. There are a few cleanup punch list items that'll be, are, they're working on.
And originally, we were going to special assess a certain amount, right?
Yes.
And by using these funds, there, I don't see any special assessments on there.
You are correct.
And the economic development sales tax qualifies to use for that, then?
Yes, it does.
Questions from Mr. Larson?
Do you need a motion for this?
I do.
Say it this way?
I certainly do. Thank you, Commissioner Olson, is there a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Jervig's second, it's been moved to second to approve, uh, the different schedule for financing the Cheyenne, uh, Road Diet Project, District number thirty oh three, as outlined by Mr. Larson. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item number five is the improvement district number thirteen thirty-seven, Wilds Twenty-First Edition Phase Two. Mr. Scott, Assistant City Administrator, will be presenting, it's on pages seventy through ninety-nine, and, uh, the intent of his proposal is to accept the bid and award a contract. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Commission President Dardis, members of the commission. Last Thursday, on May twelfth, we, uh, held a virtual bid opening for the second phase of the Wilds Twenty-First Edition. The, uh, the bid results were, uh, not as good as we were hoping for. As you can see, we only had one contractor submit a bid, and that bid was roughly fifteen, twenty percent higher than what our engineer's report was, that we had reviewed a few months ago. So, um, a couple of points that are made here in, in this agenda summary. Uh, first point being that, uh, the North Dakota Century Code does have a, a threshold for moving forward with awarding a contract when it's funded through special assessments. That threshold is forty percent. If, if the engineer's statement of cost, that is before you today, is greater than forty percent of the engineer's opinion of probable cost that was submitted in the engineer's report some time ago, uh, Century Code does not allow you to proceed with at least the financing of the project through special assessments. So, um, we are under that particular threshold with, with this project. Um, the other point I'd like to make is, beings that this is a developer-requested improvement, we certainly reached out to the developer in this case, um, walked through what, what the, um, potential assessments may, may be out here, uh, just the implications of the higher costs. They, uh, they wanted us, or they were hopeful that, that the city would proceed and award a bid to, uh, the contractor. Um, so, again, I hope you would take that into consideration. And then, uh, last, I'd, I'd wanna point out that, uh, in the conversations that our consultant, mortgaging had with some of the other contractors in the area, a few contractors that they talked to basically said that they are, they are fully booked solid with work. Um, and I think there is also just inherently, uh, Dakota Underground is already working on Phase One, which we started last year in this general area, and so, um, sometimes other contractors will take a look at that, and, and, you know, there's, there's somewhat of a, um, challenge in working around other contractors, and so, that might've been some discouragement to other, others to, um, I guess, not provide a bid. Beings that Dakota Underground is already out there working on Phase One, that is certainly why they did provide a bid for Phase Two, but, again, it attributes a little bit to the higher costs than we were anticipating, um, largely because they have a lot of, a lot of work already on the, on the schedule, so, um, you know, there, there's, we're seeing some markup from that, and of course, just the volatility in the market that we've talked about over and over in these past few months is also attributing to this higher cost. So, um, you know, really, this isn't, this is a development project, you know, so as far as staff making a recommendation to move forward, uh, as you can see here, we are recommending awarding a contract, but, you know, i- it's really, um, purely based on the fact that it's, it's within the thresholds allowed by state law, um, and that the developer who has initiated and petitioned for these improvements is also requesting that we move forward and award a bid. So, other than that, staff really, um, you know, it, it, more of a political decision at this point. If you wanna move forward, move forward, if you don't, we can certainly share that information with the developer.
Commissioner George?
Um, so, question, with the regional benefit area that's outlined, it says each regional assessment is between two thousand and twenty-five hundred. Let's say you did nothing in that local benefit area, would the homes in the regional area continue to function just fine?
Well, that's a great question, Commissioner George. There are, um, regional items such as stormwater improvements, the ponds and the drainage, uh, some, some of those regional things that eventually, as a neighborhood, they would start to experience difficulties, challenges. Now, these other areas, they have their local sewer and water, so, will they still be able to flush the toilet and/or get drinking water? Yes, uh, but some of these regional improvements that the entire area depends upon, and that would be nice to be complete, they would certainly, um, suffer from, from not having these. And again, if, if this last phase here isn't built out, the neighborhood is left with an incomplete development, and that means incomplete streets, incomplete walkability for pedestrians and, and children that are out here playing around. Um, our emergency services don't have a full network of, of roadways to, to make service calls. So, um, there is a regional benefit to finishing this neighborhood, but there is always a, a cost threshold at which, where is that comfortability in moving forward? And if I could look into the future and, and see that for any particular reason, we would, we would have reduced costs bidding this at a later date, I would certainly mention that, but with the volatility in the market, again, I, I just, I, I can't say with any degree of certainty that bidding this at a later time will, will save on cost. And actually, I think we're gonna continue to see a, a rise in, in, in prices and, and a lack of contractor availability, especially as the FM diversion gets underway, and, again, holistically, the, the FM area is, is just, it's busy and, and, um, so we're gonna see those, those higher costs reflected through in our bids. Uh, all that said, though, again, um, it, it's certainly unfortunate that we only had the one bidder, and, and that we're roughly twenty percent higher, so.
So, another question, he makes invalid points. The people that already live in those homes there, do you think any of them were told, you know, in a, in another year, so you're gonna be assessed this much more, because your neighborhood's not complete? I mean, is that, is that common knowledge? Uh, how many of these people are aware of this? I mean, every, I guarantee if you knock on every single one of their doors, they're all gonna say, no, I don't want this. So, I, I can guarantee you that, so.
Well, the, the, the short answer would be that, um, as the Wilds south of Fifty Second has progressed, in the last few years, each phase, the commission has directed us to send out correspondence to the existing residents. So, so correspondence has been sent, but it hasn't been to the tune of someone going door-to-door knocking on, you know, and having individual meetings with everybody.
Because I have gone door-to-door in this neighborhood.
Sure, yeah.
And they all say they hate special assessments and hate what they're seeing.
Yep, absolutely.
Just putting that out there.
That level of effort has not been done, but, um, as the developer has sold off lots, you know, you're, living in a developing area, so to speak, you would hope that people anticipate that there are still costs being incurred, um, but, again, the specific answer to your question is, yes, we have sent out communications in the form of letters, and of course, um, the social media that, that we post as soon as construction starts.
Additional questions?
I have one, sir.
Please, Commissioner.
If we, if we didn't do the, um, installation of the infrastructure, the developer could, right?
Yes, that is correct, Commissioner Olson, yes, that.
And then, they would just immediately pass on that full expense to each price of the lot, more likely.
That's most likely, yeah.
So, the lot would go from X number of dollars to double X or triple X of what it is today. And through this type of financing for the developer, it's cheaper for the resident in the long run, because we can give a cheaper interest rate on that infrastructure than what the developer could get. So, even though we don't like special assessments, this is probably a cheaper route for the residents to actually buy that lot, and to have it all lumped into a lot that maybe is, I'll just use sixty thousand dollars, could become a hundred thousand dollar lot from the get-go without even putting a house on it.
That's correct, Commissioner Olson, yes, there, well, there would be no oversight, right, on the private market. If, if the infrastructure was funded privately, we don't have any oversight on lot sales, and so if the developer chose to make his capital up in one block or the other, one person could be spending twenty thousand on a lot, and the next one over could be a hundred thousand, that would be up to their, um, private agenda, we wouldn't have control on that. But yes, it, it's certainly fair to say that the developer is not gonna capitalize the infrastructure and not include that somewhere in the lot sale. I, I, but.
That's, that's the free market.
That'd be the free market, that'd be up to the developer to decide how to, how to go about that.
My day.
Commissioner.
My day, Mayor, thank you. The problem with the free market, when we do something like this, is that we're not a big metro area where we have a lot of developers, a lot of these developers can't afford to do that. So, then what happens? We start getting the ones in Minneapolis coming, and all of a sudden, they start dictating everything. I don't like that, I just had a conversation with some, uh, citizens from Minneapolis, asked them how they did their stuff. They also have assessments, there's no such thing as, they don't call them special assessments, but it doesn't matter what the wording is, it's still assessments, to pay for overlays and things like that.
I see they're multimillion-dollar jets.
Pardon?
I see they're multimillion-dollar jets, they can afford it.
Who? I'm sorry, I couldn't.
I'm not gonna.
Oh, 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 I.
Sorry, it's.
Uh, Mr. Scott, can you explain alternate A, uh, line item sixty-nine?
Yes, so with, within the, uh, project, there is a, a sum of, quantity of, of dirt that has been stockpiled from digging ponds, uh, so that, that dirt needs to be hauled away. We had a bid alternate to specifically direct the contractor to take it to our lagoons. We just wanted to see what would that cost be. Um, as we know, we're trying to decommission, and we are getting quantity of dirt from the FM diversion, but we wanted to see what would that cost. Uh, a- as you see, that's five hundred thousand dollars, we are not recommending to proceed with that. Um, but that, that's really what that, that line item was, purely for our, you know, our, I guess, to do with what, I mean, if we wanted to pursue that, we certainly could, but that's an added five hundred thousand dollars, so, um, I'd, I'd just, it was of interest to see what exact, you know, what cost would that be.
Included in this assessment is light standards, are they, anything unique about them?
Traditional lighting that is installed in all of our neighborhoods.
I have a problem with any time the developer continues to ask us to, uh, special assess and fund, uh, their signage, uh, their streetlights, their barrier fences and things like that. Uh, I think that they're taking advantage of the situation, they oughta have some, uh, personal investment in this other than legal.
Yeah, there are no signs or any other aesthetic-type components here. We, we have limited to the infrastructure that we would typically allow. Um, historically, the streets and street lighting have been allowed in all of our developments. The, you know, the city owns and maintains the streetlights, um, so that's always been considered as part of a, the critical infrastructure, but yes, to your point, uh, we no longer allow things like, um, aesthetic fountains, monument signs, um, things of that nature, the fences that have been, that, you know, pop up along the arterials and collectors, so, and those are not included with this particular project.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure? I'll make the motion to approve. Commissioner Olson moves to approve the District Thirteen Thirty-Seven, Wilds Twenty-First Edition. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Jervig's second, it's been moved to second, the improvement District Thirteen Thirty-Seven, Wilds Twenty-First Edition Phase Two, to accept the bid and award the contract. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. I believe we have a three to two vote in favor of approval. Item number six, improvement District Number Thirteen Forty, sanitary sewer system rehabilitation, replacement, and incidentals. Dustin Scott, Assistant City Administrator, and City Engineer will be presenting on pages one hundred through one oh six, and this is to approve the plans and specifications and direct, uh, for bid. Mr. Scott?
Thank you again, Commission President Dardis and Commissioners. Uh, so at our, at our last meeting, we, um, approved the, the engineer's estimate, and, um, again, this is a, a sewer lift station rehabilitation project. Um, it includes not only rehabilitating lift stations, but also some forest mains and other, uh, related infrastructure. Um, and now, at this point, we're, we're asking to approve plans and then move forward with advertising our, advertising the bids, um, but along with, with, with that action, um, we are also asking to move forward and, uh, work towards acquiring additional materials that are a part of this project. Uh, if you recall, at our last meeting, we asked for fifty thousand dollars to go out and, and, uh, purchase gate valves that would be installed by this contractor. Uh, the gate valve allowance was fifty thousand dollars, and since then, um, our public works staff, again, working with the industry suppliers and, um, our typical, um, providers of this type of equipment have. and our typical providers of this type of equipment have, again, expressed significant concern on the amount of time it will take to get this equipment here. And so every week counts. And the request at this point is to have another $350,000. Now this, these items are coming off of the total projects. Our construction estimate that we presented last meeting was about, let's say, 1.5 million for construction. These numbers would reduce, are basically a part of that estimate. But this ask for another $350,000 today, about 185,000 is for the pumps at these lift station sites. And then about 165,000 is for the control panels. And so what we would do, our pumps are pretty much sole sourced, they have been for years. We are working with the sole source provider for that. And then we'd like to get three quotes with the contractors that would supply control panels and that sort of equipment. Again, the idea is that we can make those orders, get the materials on their way. And then by the time we are able to advertise, award contracts, get into a contract and start work on some of the other items, those materials can already be here and then this contractor would then install them versus waiting to have our contract in place, at which time then the contractor would turn around and start ordering those materials. We would lose about four to six weeks at the very best. Possible we could lose more time. And so what we're trying to do here again is just, we're not trying to circumvent the process per se. We're just, we're trying to get ahead of the game and order some of these materials so that they can get here much sooner. And again, our contractor will then take care of the installation. So we're just trying to cut out that particular component. But again, it's all part of the same 1.5 million dollar budget. It's just now when we go out to bids for the rest of the construction, instead of anticipating a 1.5 million dollar bid, we'll be anticipating a 1.2 million dollar bid, if that's making sense. So, so again, before you tonight, I'm asking to approve the plans and specs and then authorize the bid advertisement. And of course, asking for authorization to proceed with ordering those materials not to exceed $350,000. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Commissioner Olson.
Are there any other pieces of equipment that we're going to need to purchase ahead of time before the bid gets awarded? Or are we pretty much squared up on what we really need now that we anticipate could be a problem getting?
Great question, Commissioner Olson, yes. This, this kind of rounds out the, the materials that have a significant lead time and are concerned with, with how long it'll take to get that. I wish we would have brought this forward at the last meeting when we asked about the, the gate valves. Honestly, it was not, but a few days after that particular meeting, that Public Works approached engineering and said, well, hey, we've been talking with our control panel suppliers and we've been talking with the pump manufacturers. And those things are also going to be long lead times. Can we also start ordering those instead of waiting for a contractor to be acquired to make those orders? So all we're really doing is, instead of the contractor ordering, staff is ordering these materials, the contractor will then install. So yes, this, this will be the last request on that.
Mr. Shockley. Is this copacetic with North Dakota Century Code purchasing?
Yeah, we, we worked through these issues before Dustin brought it forward.
Commissioner Simmons.
Dustin, thank you. So my question, I guess I just have would be on these supplies, the way I'm hearing you, we're going to order them and then the contractor will put them in, correct?
That's correct.
So who are we purchasing them from, the contractor or direct?
We are purchasing them from the manufacturers directly.
So that kind of tells me though that the contractor's missing some money here. Because isn't he doing markup if he were to purchase them himself? How's that, how's that working? I mean, somewhere, I'm afraid he's going to come back and charge it and say, well, you, you brought me the product, but guess what? The rates went up.
So we don't have a contractor yet?
Okay, so.
So we're, we're trying to solidify this before we go to the, to the bid market with.
Because he will build that into his price tag then, that he's not supplying the.
So in essence, we would actually save money then from the contractor's markup. Because if we, if we include these items in the bid, then the contractor will be responsible for ordering that material and getting it on site. And that's where then they'll usually put a five or 10% markup.
Trust me, he'll make the money somewhere, Dustin, here. He'll make up a little bit of this because he's, it's like you ordered a sump pump and have somebody come out and put it in. They're not going to do it without making some money on that part, so. But I get it, that's fine, I understand it.
What is our risk here if, you know, we just talked about a bid earlier that we had one contractor? Because everybody's capacity is full. And here we are, you know, $350,000 worth of equipment, valves and the like. What if the bid comes in 40% over and by North Dakota Century Code, we can't move forward? Please.
Just that last portion, Commissioner President Dardis. The threshold of 40% in the Century Code is specific to financing improvements with special assessments. There is no threshold in the Century Code as far as other public improvements. So public improvements in general, and I would certainly like John to correct me if I'm wrong, but in this particular case, since we're not funding the project with special assessments, there is no threshold really in, in the Century Code. In fact, the Century Code doesn't even require that we bring forward an engineer's report and an engineer's statement of cost to compare to. That is, that is very specific process dictated in the improvements financed through special assessments. So just want to clarify that part. Did I miss anything there, John?
No, you're, you're correct.
To the first part of your question, what risk does the city have? Regardless of whether or not the Century Code has a threshold, this commission body certainly has its own threshold. And so yes, there could be, if we go out to bid and we're over what we were estimating and now we have materials sitting here on hand, that would certainly be a risk. I would hope though that at some point, given that unlike the development project that I spoke before, this is a very urgent, critical infrastructure need. We have five sanitary sewer lift stations on their last leg. And if we don't do something about them, they will fail. And so I would hope that even if we have these materials and we have to, worst case scenario, we have to rebid and we try maybe one or two times, three times, but at some point, we have to pull the trigger and proceed. Or we'll have sewer embasements.
Sounds like a bigger risk.
So I would hope that we can store this material for a year if we had to try again. But I'm very confident and hopeful that we'll find at least the contractor and be at least within some sensible ballpark of our engineering estimates.
I think getting ahead of the supply issues makes sense, I'd make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurdabig, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner George seconds. Been moved in second into, with regard to District 1340, sanitary sewer system rehabilitation, replacement and incidentals to approve purchasing said needed equipment up to, not to exceed $350,000. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Item number seven. Project 2264, traffic signal at Veterans and 37th Avenue East. Mr. Scott, Assistant City Administrator, City Engineer, is on pages 107 through 119. And the action that's required this evening is to concur with the city of Fargo to accept the bid and award the contract as presented. Mr. Scott.
Thank you again, Commissioner President Dardis and Commissioners. This item has been here a few times now. It's the traffic signal out by the Cheyenne High School. City of Fargo opened bids, as you can see here in the, in our agendas packet. Fargo awarded a contract on May 2nd, this is more of a formality. We entered into an MOU with Fargo at a previous meeting. So by agreement, we're involved with this project. But again, we still want to offer our concurrence on the bids. So as you can see, the bid was 11% over the engineer's estimate. Again, it's kind of the, in line with what we've been seeing, at least this is a little closer. But at this point, we're recommending to concur with Fargo and award the bid to Stratocorporation. And again, I want to remind the commission that the city of Fargo is administering this project. So really, we have a contract with Fargo and Fargo is administering the contract for the construction. With that, I will answer any other questions.
Questions for Mr. Scott?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner George, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, second. Been moved in second to approve Project Number 2264, traffic signal at Veterans and 37th Avenue East as presented by Mr. Scott in its joint powers agreement with the city of Fargo to accept the bid and award the contract. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Item number eight, update on the capital improvement plan. Dustin Scott, City Administrator, Assistant City Administrator.
Thank you again, Commissioner President Dardis and Commissioners. Really not, not a lot of new information to share here. We've had a few public meetings now. We had our first meeting with you on March 10th. We then brought the CIP to the commission on March 21st. And then most recently concluded a town hall forum on April 26th. Following the town hall meetings, meetings that we've had, we did provide additional detailed information, a more detailed project list on our website within the CIP. So there is a posted revision that has been there now for a couple of weeks. And you know, really beyond that, there's not a lot of new information to share. So we're going to be asking for the commission to move forward and adopt the capital improvement plan. Before I do that, I'd like to ask our communications director, Melissa, to come up here and share some participation statistics with the commission.
Good evening, thank you. Thank you, Dustin. Because the public engagement and participation was important to you guys, I wanted to come up and just provide some brief statistics on what we did in terms of event promotion and then what we saw in terms of event participation. Event promotion, we used paid social media, which means advertising on Facebook, Instagram and LinkedIn, as well as organic social media. We had a series of posts on Twitter and Facebook and LinkedIn. Our local media was kind enough to cover the event for us as well. This is all prior to the event to encourage people to attend. We also used our website. I'm going to use a statistic called reach, which means the number of times that we can count individuals who saw some kind of content related to the event. This is across media, website, organic social media and paid social media. This number I calculated as conservatively as possible. And, and the paid social media was the definite, was the definite boost for that. And so the total reach for the event was 80,876. So we felt like that was a pretty good promotion for the event. In terms of participation, I calculated that utilizing a number of forms that I considered for participation. One was event attendance. So not counting the individuals who are, who are up here and on the sides, but counting anyone in the audience, including staff. And then the attendees that were here and in the public, there were 44 between the two events. YouTube views, not only live, but in the first 48 hours after the event, we had 62 form submissions. We had an online form that was available that was promoted online. It was in the news release. If you look at the Facebook comments, there were times where individuals were asking about different projects that they were curious about and we encouraged them to fill out the form so that we could have it captured. There were five of those. And then there were social media comments. Now, there was 23 total social media comments and 11 of those were unique commenters. So altogether, that was 122 different forms of participation. So that's a 0.15% participation when you look at the total reach. So just wanted to share those statistics with you. I think it was, it was a great, a great attempt at public input and engagement. And I look forward to working on other events and seeing how we can continue that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Melissa? Thank you very much. Anything else additional, Mr. Scott?
No, again, just looking to, our request to adopt the capital improvement plan and other than that, I'll.
I'll make a motion to approve or adopt the 2022 CIP.
Is there a second? Is there a second? For the purpose of moving it forward, I, I second the motion. Been moved and seconded to approve the capital improvement plan for 2022 as distributed. Any further discussion? Please, Commissioner Jurdabig.
So as it relates to the capital improvement plan, you know, my, my view on it is there's certain things that are not debatable or political in any way. Fixing a road, sewer, water, floods, you know, protection of any kind. But I won't vote for something that includes a city hall. I don't believe there's been enough discussion on it. And I realize it's not a commitment to building something, but I believe it's a baby step in that direction and I don't think it's something that should be taken lightly. I think buildings, physical buildings should be on a separate list and scrutinized differently.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurdabig. Please, Mrs. Fess.
And I appreciate that. However, if you look back, our fire hall was on the CIP prior as well. And it only took place because of a series of meetings that helped it happen. Now, had it not been the thing the commission wanted to do, it would not have moved forward. Any one of these projects, as you know, are totally 100% up to the discretion of the commission and staff. Even though I know there's people out there that don't believe this, staff would not move a project forward if it was not voted to go forward by commission and in the fashion commission wanted it to. And so I just, all this CIP is for is to, we're setting the parameters of how much the city will help fund projects. That's in there. If this isn't approved, then we don't have that approved. And the basic outline of projects coming forward, it's going to change constantly. And the, the city hall, I really don't, personally, I don't care if it's on there or not, but I will tell you that it's going to have to be dealt with because we have a police department that is not good in the area of space. If you don't care at all about city hall, the police department is out of space. The police department, there are issues there. There are safety issues in the building. I don't care if that, if that goes forward or not, take it off of there. But I think staff has worked extremely hard on this CIP. And it seems to be a very small number of people in the population of West Fargo, in fact, probably less than five, that are opposed to it. And there are over 42,000 people living in this community.
Commissioner Jurdabig.
So, you know, along those lines, two thoughts. First off, the fire department's actually a prime example of what I mean. The first baby step to making it happen was the CIP. And we took that, putting it on the CIP very casually, I believe, when that happened a few years ago because it wasn't a commitment, but it was the first step. I'm not even saying that there isn't a need for a city hall. I just think that that is a completely separate discussion and I'm not willing to vote for something that, until that discussion happens, that moves it along the process.
Thank you. Commissioner Olson.
Prior to 2020, we did not have a five-year CIP, as I believe. We basically had an internal working document, so there was no public knowledge of what the potential plans were, anything else. And we first adopted a five-year plan in 2020. Last year, we didn't do it for various reasons, I would assume COVID and other related things. So then we, we put it back on the agenda to retool it, update it, add, drop, things like that. So I commend the staff for doing a five-year lookout of to what possibly we need. And there's, is so much more transparency now than there ever has been what our capital improvement projects are, that are being looked at. So I commend you all and I will definitely be voting for adoption of this. It's, it's just not, not a, I don't. I don't see it as a baby step to get something in, in the works here.
Commissioner Simmons.
Thank you. I think by having it on the CIP, it's just we're letting people know that it's in our radar, and that's basically all what we're doing. We're not saying we're going to build a city hall tomorrow. I think we have to. But it's putting it on the radar, so I, again, I don't think it's a, it's not a big issue for me, and I support it too, so.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor of approving the capital improvement plan as distributed signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number nine is the second reading of the Massage Ordinance twelve oh six. Mr. Shockley.
Thank you, Mr. Commission President. It says, no changes between the first and second reading. Same as what was presented at the first reading. Can I answer any questions the commission might have?
Commissioner George, your concerns initially was, have been all cleared up? Okay, very good. Commissioners, what's your pleasure on ordinance twelve oh six?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner George. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Jordan big seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the second reading of the Massage Ordinance twelve oh six. Is there any discussion? Hear any, none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number ten is Mrs. Fisk, City Administrator, page one twenty-seven, a discussion regarding cost of living adjustment for twenty-twenty-three. Mrs. Fisk.
Good evening, Commission, Commission President and Commissioners. I've had discussions with all of you about the cost of living prior to it, to it even going crazy like it is right now. And with how things went last year, staff discussed with you bringing forward what a cost of living increase of each percentage would be based on this year's salaries for the coming year, and let you give us a preliminary idea of what number you want us to put in the budget. You can change it at any time during preliminary, right before final. It's up to you. But this was just to give staff a placeholder so that when we meet with you, we have that in there, and we don't have some artificial number already placed in there. And so, this isn't a decision you have to make today. But I felt it was important to get it out in front of you and see if you had questions or if you had any thoughts.
Commissioners? We've all reviewed the document. Any questions?
I guess my just thought is when we're figuring out a percentage, that we look at what everybody else is doing.
Yep. Well, that'd be part of the research, for sure. What possible other sectors of employers are doing. How's the consumer price index, you know, there's all kinds of variables that we will look at that. But, so thank please, go ahead.
Fargo's going to look at us, we're going to look at them, we're just going to look at us. We're all going to be looking at each other until somebody makes a move.
You know, at, at a preliminary stage, you know, we're, we're, you know, we really have to give some type of direction to Mrs. Fisk and Mr. Larson and the department heads. So, if I could be so bold to make a suggestion, at this point in time, they just plug numbers in at two percent. And then, obviously, we can change that. That's, that's just a placeholder, but we have to have some way to start. So, we, you know, human resources can apply all of that to the formulas and the like, and because along with, not only is it the COLA that they're, you know, we also have to take a look at what happens in twenty-twenty-three with regard to step changes and all of that type of thing. So, it's, it's a, it's a, requires some study to it, so. Mrs. Fisk, is that acceptable to you?
Yes, it is. I didn't need a motion. I just needed a number that you're all comfortable with, knowing that it's being used.
I guess I, I just looked down the way for acknowledgement, because that's acceptable to you? All right, if you would, please.
Okay, we will take that and apply that within the budget.
All right. We'll continue on with your reports. Item number eleven, please.
Yes, our first meeting in July just so happens to land on July fourth, and it seems to me like not anybody would probably show up that's
Oh, I think we should.
Mr. Jervig will be here.
I make that motion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't know for other commission
Due to a lack of a second.
So, I believe last time you last, you usually either move it or cancel it. And I don't know what, this being on a Monday, what that does for people being gone. I have no idea.
Commissioner Olson has a comment.
If you cancel it, does that, how does that affect the rest of the month, and, and then the following month after that? Would you just cancel? We'd only have one meeting in July, is what you're saying? Or we would still have two, and then have to jiggle?
You could either move it to a different day and have the second one, or cancel it and just have the second meeting of the month.
I just want to know what, you know, just so it's clear what we mean by canceling it.
Well, yeah, so it's either basically probably have a Tuesday or cancel, and the question to me, Mary, would be the department heads as far as the special engineering and how that
How heavy is the agenda?
Exactly. And what is the answer to that?
That's a wonderful question, Commissioner Simmons. I appreciate it. Can't answer it.
Bring the question back after June fourteen.
Okay.
Because obviously, Commissioner Jordan is not going to be any help with this situation at all, and we'll rely on the new commissioners.
How much time do you need?
We don't need a lot of time. We can bring it back at the June twentieth meeting when Commissioner Jervig is post-retirement and see what you guys want to do. That is fine.
That's, I, I think that's the way we'll deal with it. That's, that's acceptable to you?
June when? Thirteen? I mean, what's
Twenty.
I, I guess either we're going to have it Tuesday, or we're not going to have the meeting. It's not a big
Right.
We can decide that. That's easy.
But staff will have an indication of how heavy the agenda is going to be.
By then, okay.
If it's something like this evening, obviously, we're going to have a meeting.
Yep. Okay, you're right.
Okay, I'll bring that back on June twentieth. Okay, and I only have a couple items. I'll have a couple items on my administrative report. I was going to talk to you about the extra work that needed to be done in planning and zoning, building inspection area. We have a couple of storage. Right now, there's storage areas that we're going to be turning into office spaces that are very minimal in cost. It's just buying the, the office furniture, and what we're trying to do is buy office furniture that all matches, so that if and when there's a building, a move, whatever, everything can go with, so we're not wasting money on that anyway. So, that would, that will come back before you guys, when we get some more clear information. The only other thing that I wanted to do is to just give a quick reminder on the open records requests. What I have been telling the public is that to send open records requests through me as administration, and then I will contact the staff and have them work on it. Otherwise, we get five different people working on the same thing, and we overlap. A really important thing is to not, if someone wants records, they need to request them. If people circumvent the process and get them another way, we could have legal issues because they're not redacted. There's costs involved. If we have to bring in our outside consultants to help us pull information, we otherwise wouldn't have had to pull, that, we get charged for that. And there, there's just a lot of costs, and I just, and the concern is that the general public, there are people that pay for their open records requests. And so, if we were going to start not charging, then we can't charge anybody, and then all of our staff time is going to be open records requests for people that don't pay. So, it's just, it's just a reminder, because it's easy to just, it's easy to want to help, and, but if it's a request for documents that we don't have, we don't have to create them, but if the commission tells us, you, you take care of this, we will, but that's an open records request. So. Do you have any questions?
So, if a commissioner has a request for some information, you, you're going to bill the commissioner for that information?
Not if a commissioner has a request and it's for the commissioner, because what happens is if a commissioner makes a request of us, we don't have to send it to legal and get redacted, because you're commissioners. But if that information is obtained by a commissioner with the intention of sharing it with the public, then we have to know that so we can redact it. And then, we need to, technically, we should charge for that, because that's, if you're requesting it, like if Mr. Simmons came to me and said, I want whatever, all the costs that went into this building for the last ten years. But he was asking for that because he wanted to give it to somebody else, like a builder or something. That's a totally different thing than if he wants to go through it himself. That's all I'm saying. There's a fine, I, I get the line.
Thank you, T. John, is there a law or something, is there something that, some type of a law that says we can't do that, or we can, or we have to, you know, what are the, I guess, what's the protocol? I, I get the protocol is exactly what Tia said, but is there some type of a?
Certainly, Commissioners, if you, if you choose to share documents that haven't been redacted, because they might, they might include like EIN numbers for employers, they might include confidential information because we don't redact documents for commission members. If we get a request for open records from a resident, then we just go through the process and redact those and make sure that there's nothing that slips through. There's potential liability for the city if there is something within the document. We ran into that once before where some documents got released, even though it wasn't open records request. We've remedied that now, but we just want to make sure that during the process, if it is going to the public, that it just goes through the redaction process. North Dakota, there's not much we can redact. But the things that do get redacted are pretty important. Those are personal information, like like people's personal telephone numbers, things like that, that you don't necessarily want out in the public domain.
And I do not have anything else on my report, and we do not have any correspondence. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any non-agenda items you'd like to bring forward? Any department heads have any non-agenda items they'd like to bring forward?
President Artis?
Yes, please.
Just a real quick update for the commission and probably the other department heads, that you'll see a lot of people roaming around city hall, effective tomorrow morning at nine AM. Our police academy starts here at the city, so we've got twenty-two recruits who will be taking part in the partnership with Lake, Lake Region State College and our police department and Cass County Sheriff's Office that kicks off tomorrow morning at nine AM. So, excited to, to get that officially underway here at the city.
Congratulations. Twenty-two recruits seems like a pretty good class.
It's a really nice class. Yeah, talking to the folks at Lake Region, they're, they're very happy with the, with the numbers.
So, how long will they be roaming around the city hall?
So, it'll be kind of hit or, hit and miss. Classroom portions will take place in the training room. We're going to try to limit most of it to the west side, have the partition up so we can still utilize the east side for other training events that are already slated and scheduled to be conducted here at the city. And then, there will be a lot of off-site training as well, so it'll be, you know, there'll be weeks where they'll be here five days a week, and there will be other weeks where they won't be around at all if they're out doing firearms work or some of the, the driving courses that we have to do off-site and things like that. Sheriff's Office, Cass County Sheriff Johnner is going to be hosting us up there for some defensive tactics work and things like that, so. It'll be a little bit hit and miss, but they'll be around for a better part of twelve weeks, so you should, you'll see people around.
Thank you, Chief. Any other department heads? I participated in Arbor Day Celebration last Friday at, which was a great event. The city was again awarded Tree City USA for the thirty-eighth year in a row, and we were only one of three cities in the state of North Dakota that was awarded the Growth Award. Cavalier, Wapperton, and West Fargo received that award. So, the Public Works, our urban forestry, the committee members were all in attendance. They're very proud of the work they're doing and, and the, the work that Public Works is doing. So, that's something to be proud of. Thirty-eight consecutive years is a Tree City USA, so. It was a great event, and they also honored the Osland family, which owns Sandy's Donuts. Third generation is, is taking over those operations, and so there was a tree that was going to be planted in the boulevard on the north side of Sandy's Donuts in honor of Sandy and Donna Osland as well. It was a great event. Wish it had been attended by more people, because they're, they're great people, and they, they give back a great deal to the community, and it's always fun to acknowledge great community partners like that. Anything else? Commissioner Simmons?
Move to adjourn.
Commissioner Olson, second. You stand adjourned? I wondered what the hell you